There's a lot going on in the news as always, we're bringing it back here local with an interview for Liberty candidate Nicholas Wildstar, running for Fresno City Council District Three. How are you doing today Nicholas?
Fantastic Sam, thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to be here again to speak with you, my man.
Thank you. We love the Liberty Candidates on Weaponized News and we have our co-host Thomas from Alpha Omega Energy. How you doing today, Thomas?
Doing great. It's good to be back in our Weaponized News broadcast.
Yeah, so there's a lot going on in the world. We were just talking about Elon Musk, maybe, maybe buying Twitter. And so we were talking about that a little bit. We're streaming on Twitter actually right now. And so somehow Weaponized News with all the censorship has managed to stay on Twitter, probably heavily shadow banned, we don't know. But, but we're growing there slowly and steadily and we're able to broadcast there. So we're thankful for that today. So Nicholas, the first question, why do you want to work for the government?
Cause it's screwed up. I mean, somebody's got to get it right one of these days, right? And it's not really the government that's the problem. It's the people that work for the government, you know what I mean? They're so corrupt. They have all of these special interest groups that they're in the pocket for. So it's really just the people that are causing the system itself to be devalued. And something that we, we the people see as being an interference with our day-to-day lives. So I figured the best way to get it back on track is to get involved myself and be one of those people that steers it into the right direction. So that's been my goal ever since I've been involved as a political activist. I call myself a raptivist. I had started out in music and had shifted to political activism around 2000, 2008, 2009, something like that. But first ran for office for governor in 2014, then ran again in 2018 when I was endorsed by the Libertarian Party. And I most recently ran as a gubernatorial candidate in the recall election to get rid of Gavin Newsom. Unfortunately, I didn't get elected to replace him or else the state would be in a much better condition than it is in now. But gotta start somewhere, you know, so I figured why not make a statement here in Fresno as a city council member? And hopefully again, start the, the, the direction and to the right, you know, way where we should be going here.
I think that's how we first met during the recall Newsom campaign. You're out there putting in a lot of hard work, gathering those signatures. And we did succeed, we did succeed in, in having the recall election. We failed, we failed in actually recalling and replacing Newsom. But you could see that the sentiment was there from these, from these draconian lockdown measures that Governor Gavin Newsom put in place due to the virus that can't be named. Since we're streaming on YouTube, we don't want to get flagged, but you could see people were very upset. They locked down the schools. They did all these draconian measures, all the, all the COOF mandates that, that, and put a lot of businesses out of business. And so we gathered over as a collective effort, the recall Newsom campaign gathered like over 2 million signatures, right?
Yes, it did. I believe like almost 2.2 million to be exact. But yeah, you're absolutely right. And speaking with the people on the streets collectively, the people of California were sick and tired of Gavin Newsom and wanted to get him out of office. It's a shame that that effort kind of fell short. Once the gubernatorial candidates were presented by the media, I think that played a, you know, a heavy factor in it not being as successful as we thought it would. Because it really was a lot of bipartisan, you know, support in wanting to get him out of office. So, and on the signature side at least, I wish that again, that would have translated on in votes.
Yeah, they framed it as because of course the frontrunner was Larry Elder and they framed it. He's a far right winger, Trumper extremist that's going to take away all of your progressive progression here in California, right? And they swung it in like two weeks. It was pretty amazing because it was like Newsom's gone, right? The polls are saying this guy's losing, he's in trouble. And it felt, it felt like the media, and then of course Larry Elder, he did, he campaigned on ending welfare. And it's like, dude, maybe you could really think that we should end welfare. And I think we should definitely cut a lot of it back, but you can't campaign on that in California, a heavy blue state and think that you're going to win. So he just came hard right and it was like, maybe you're too far extreme right and you should have, maybe you could do that once you're in office, but tone it down a little bit. And, but it was also the media, you know, they, they called, what was most disgraceful? And just, they called him the black face of white supremacy, right? I mean, so that was just like so disrespectful, so disgusting that the way the media framed it against Elder. It was really sad.
Yeah, I mean, the media of course has its, its job and that's to make sure that the public stays misinformed. And they did, they did a very good job in doing so during the recall. But that more so because of them framing it as the Republican recall, as they called it, Republican recall. When, as you pointed out, in being a signature gatherer, speaking to the people that were actually signing that petition, they were Republicans, they were Democrats, they were liberals, conservatives, they were, I don't give a damn about it, just get Newsom out of office. You know, and that's really the message that I wish end up would have been getting promoted to the public. But unfortunately, again, they had their agenda and a lot of them were left-leaning, you know, publications. And that's really why they targeted and, you know, sided with Gavin Newsom is because he's their golden boy, you know? And Larry Elder was a perfect target, you know, he made himself a, a, a perfect target. Like you pointed out with, you know, not toning it down and focusing on the political rhetoric that has continued to divide the people of the state of California instead of speaking along the lines in a tone that would have unified them, you know, wanting to end the unnecessary lockdowns that has proven now, you know, here we are, fast forward. Two years later, or whatever the case may be, the science has proven they were unnecessary. They did nothing, you know? So the people that were out there protesting against them the entire time were absolutely right about it not being backed by science. Like myself, like yourself, you know? So yeah, and the people that suffered from it were the residents of California, you know, the hardworking people, the people trying to keep food on their table and a roof over their head and, you know, make sure they're able to provide for their families. And it's sad again that the message fell flat, not only with the candidates, the leading candidate Larry Elder. You know, it's unfortunate that I didn't get promoted because I would have been heard by more people saying exactly that. And the Republican Party didn't help in, in that effort either, you know? And by making sure more of the candidates were heard instead of focusing on a specific few. So it would have been better if they even the playing field, you know, it's politics and it's all about who's able to rise up to the top of the crop, so to speak.
Some of the most ridiculous things if you, if I remember about the lockdowns were when they, they arrested a surfer out in the ocean.
Yeah, I remember that.
Remember that? The guy was out in the ocean alone surfing and they, and they arrested him. And then also in Southern California, they bulldozed sand into skate parks so the kids couldn't go to the state skate park, right? And it's just like, and but all that was directed from the state level. Gavin Newsom the same, make it as cruel and, and just horrible for everybody as you possibly can. And he, he deserved to be recalled, man. He really did deserve.
Well, yeah, I mean, you would think with all of the discomfort he caused the people of California, it would have kind of been more people that were demanding his removal despite whoever was going to replace him.
My cat, my cat could be better than him, right? You know, it's just.
At least for a year, you know, somebody else in there for a year. What more damage can they do than what this guy has done? And he hasn't stopped, you know, I mean, he's been out there doing more, doing more violating of his own policies when he was out at the, what was it? The football championship game?
Yeah, in LA, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Where he's out there maskless, even though the people of Los Angeles are being forced to wear masks, being forced to provide identification that they've been vaccinated. Now they're backtracking on all of these policies since they've removed the mandates. And that was only after the, the governor again got exposed for, you know, not being as concerned about public health as he makes it seem. So it's sad that we got put into this situation, but now it's a matter of what we're going to do about it. And we do have an election coming up, June 7th here in California will be mailed out ballots early May. So you'll have between May and June to vote. You have no excuse. Get that ballot mailed in, taken into person. If you want, go to a voting station, whatever the case may be, just vote. But with the options that have been propped up by the Republican Party, it's, it's a possibility that Gavin Newsom may end up getting the majority in, in June and we'll be stuck with them again for another four years. So that's why, that's why, that's why it's even more important for us to take action on the local level and make sure that we're securing our community by making sure our local officials represent and reflect the values that we want protected by our government officials. And hopefully the people of Fresno will give me the opportunity as a city council representative.
Yeah, we have something called the Bill of Rights, the Constitution, and the guy you're running against, Miguel Arias seems to have forgotten that in District Three in Fresno, California here. It's the Southwest Tower District, Downtown Chinatown and South Fresno and Central Fresno. And so it's a rather large district with a, with a diverse constituency. But this guy was like the number one tyrant. He was sending out code enforcement to shut down the Waffle House and all this stuff. And he was like the number one lockdowner, number one tyrant for lockdowns because he said he was saving everybody's life. But actually it turns out that he's nothing more than a tyrant criminal. I guess you can't call him that, I can, for violating our civil rights. He violated our civil rights, our bill of rights, our constitutional rights under order of Newsom. He was cited for, at the very beginning of this, he was a, remember those activists, Ben Berkwalm? Another activist went to his home to confront him about why are you being such a tyrant to stand up for our rights? And he came out and pushed him and he was actually cited for that. And now he's, he has these shady dealings. Somehow Fresno City lost $400,000 to African email scam. That happened, that, that happened just recently and that's under this guy's watch.
Let me clear that up. Actually it was not African email scams. He, Miguel Arias made those claims. It ended up finding out that those scammers were American. And what they did was they, they used some invoices, they made phony invoices that looked similar to the ones that the city officials were sending out and it was on automatic payment. And the, I guess, person that was responsible of making these payments made a human oversight, you know, and continued to make those payments despite, or, you know, them again being phony invoices. So it's really, it's a matter of cover up. Because what the city officials did was even though they knew about this back in 2020, they didn't make it public. They didn't say anything about it. And even to, even to this day, they're sitting on the details of the matter because I guess it's under an FBI investigation, but they serve the people of Fresno. They have a responsibility to the people of Fresno. The people of Fresno are the ones who elected them into office. So therefore they shouldn't have to comply with federal policy. When again, their responsibility is to their constituency here in this city. So if it's a matter of compliance to make sure that certain details aren't exposed as a matter of security, then that's another story. But from what has been learned so far or has been exposed by reporters is that they simply just are choosing not to provide all of the details because they don't want to be exposed for all of their, you know, overlook, you know, overlooking them overlooking the situation and all of the, the mistakes that they've made, you know? It's obvious at this point, but I'm pretty sure with the, with exposure of a bit more of the details, it all come out as to who's involved, but Miguel.
It goes on and on with this Arias character, right? He's, he's been accused by Fresno developers of pay-to-play schemes. And then we just saw recently Councilman Gary Bretafeld, actually the only elected representative in our area that stood up and during the lockdowns and said, these are wrong, they're unconstitutional. These are, you're violating people's civil rights here. He's like the only guy, so we got to give him, I give him respect for that. But now he's come out and said that, what does he call them? There, there's four on the city council that have been using their, their expense funds to fund their campaigns, to pay, pay per, pay for play type schemes. And so he's been exposing that, going through that lately. So it looks like we have a very corrupt city council. And these people have got to go. They're treating the public treasury, the, the taxpayer money as their own private funds, like they're a private business and can run around and do whatever they want. But they, but they work for us, we the people, they abuse us, they do all this crazy stuff and they, and then they just play politics and, and try to deflect, cover up, like you say, and what is it? The, the cover up is worse than the crime here now. And so a lot of this stuff's starting to come out and this guy's looking real dirty. He's looking real bad, the guy you're running against. So I mean, you gotta be able to do better than him. I mean, because this guy, he puts on a good front, like he cares. But then you start looking around and going, this guy's not an honest man and he's done a lot of bad things to a lot of people.
Well, here's an opportunity for people that are upset with him, his performance as a representative to actually switch him out and get some new talent in there. I mean, we have, I believe, four city council seats that are up for grabs with three being one of them. And as you pointed out, he's one of the most disliked of the city council members, mainly because he's been a vocal, a, a very vocal supporter of a lot of the policies that have harmed the people of this city the most and especially with those lockdowns. It's awful. He wasn't out there siding with the hardworking people of this city that ended up losing their jobs or the families that weren't able to afford childcare, you know, and send their kids to school because the schools were closed and, you know, but yet they were still being taxed for them. We were all still being taxed for city services that we weren't able to utilize. So it's a matter of responsibility and accountability. And Miguel Arias has proven to be someone that is not reliable for either of those. So as far as people again, having the opportunity to step up to the plate and do something about Miguel, what they can do is head over to, thank you. Head over to my crowd pack because I'm 100% crowdfunded. Miguel Arias, he's backed by unions, he's backed by, you know, corporations, monopolies, the same old players that are, you know, they got a grip on city policies. And, you know, if we want to again, take action, we have to make sure that we're funding it and protesting with our dollars. This is one way to, that we can do it is by backing a candidate that's actually going to be of the people, by the people and for the people. And that's me. So if people go over to my crowd pack, they can make a donation. My fundraising goal is $25,000. I don't know if I'll be able to make that. But if I can get a little bit more money, I know I can make enough of a statement here in the city to where I can get enough attention from the amount of voters that I need to at least proceed through to the primary and go head-to-head with them in November.
How many people are running for the seat?
Three, three, yeah.
Let's play your video. I like your video here.
So much. I appreciate.
Good video. Let's, let's take a look at this video.
What about these roads that keep falling apart? Call Domino's. Did you know that Domino's Pizza will fix your potholes or even pave a brand new road in exchange for advertising? That means road repairs can be done without spending any of taxpayers' money. I know it sounds like a wild idea and I've got plenty more where that came from. So go wild Fresno and vote WildStar for city council.
That's a good, that's a good ad right there. That's a.
Thank you very much. It's just plain and simple, straight to the point. A lot of people are upset about the road conditions around the town. And it's like, hey, what better way to fix them than to just let a company come along, fix them in exchange for advertising and taxpayers won't have to pay anything for it, you know? It's, it's a win-win situation and to me it's a no-brainer. But it's sad that city officials, not only here in Fresno, but across, across the country, haven't really taken advantage of what Domino's is offering with their paving for pizza program.
That's why we need you and other people like you. We need fresh blood in there with new ideas, not the same old government thinking that is failing us. Thomas, you want to chime in? You got any questions?
Yeah, that's, that's fantastic. I thought it might even be a parody or something, really? They're doing that? I, I mean, if they're, if they're doing that, absolutely. You got, you gotta, you know, anytime they're giving it away for free just to splash their ads out there, they're going to provide this community service that's so valuable. Of course you gotta, you gotta say yes to something like that and should be going after that. That's, that's absolutely fantastic. And probably that can be extended to other companies as well, local companies that want to, you know, take a stab at that. Particularly the, these gigantic corporations that don't, you know, they're not giving back to society as much as a lot of people would like them to. And here's another way for them to do that in a roundabout fashion. So yeah, it's a creative, creative, very nifty idea. I, I wish there are some big advertisers in, in the developing economies that could do something like that. That'd be fantastic. But in a California, that, that's great. So really happy to see you doing these creative kind of things. I would like to ask a, a number of questions on some other policies. So Sam can, you can just tell me when I can have a go at that whenever you decide.
Go for it. My mom wants me to ask, okay, Nicholas, she, she's not in your district, but she lives in Fresno here. And she just recently had her mailbox, she has it broken into, she has a community mailbox and, and they came and pried the back off of it. And I think there's like, I don't know, 30 different, it's like the community mailbox, you know, everybody has their little, their little box. And so she wanted to know, and then the, I guess it's federal, but then it's like the federal government doesn't want to do anything about it and they're jerking everybody around and they're like, we're not going to fix it for a month. You had to come to the post office to get your mail. And she's like, ask him if there's anything, any ideas that he has about these, these mail thefts that are going on? Any, any solutions locally for that? Have you heard about this? Because it's actually happened in my neighborhood as well, in Clovis here. And the funny thing is there's literally a cop car parked because the person that lives at the house right across the street from the community mailbox is a police and they have their police car parked in their front yard. And, but they still did it. They took a crowbar to it and just pried it open, you know, in the middle of the night when everybody was asleep and stole everybody's mail. And then we have to wait like two weeks for the federal government, the post office to come here and replace it. And it's just, it's, it's a nightmare.
Well, yeah, I've heard about that. The mailbox break-ins all around the city. And it's unfortunate that, you know, thieves will be thieves, you know, and they're going to find something still, whether it's mail or somebody's car or whatever the case may be. But.
I think Amazon Ring can probably fix that. Some startup, some local Fresno startup. You, you could, one of the things you could do, you could launch a new initiative and say, you know, we're going to support as a city council, we're going to support the local startup solving this problem. Here's an idea, you know, you have this Amazon ring. They already have these video cameras. How about, how about some startup develop a solution right here in Fresno? And we'll help promote you, you know, as a city of doing that to solve this issue. And they could, they can make some new solution where that's going to, all these boxes are going to be on, on the, you know, the camera's going to have some, be on, on the mailbox. And there's some other startup that made like a, recently a very high secure, security mailbox and they, they pay for that. And they're monetizing this in, in some method, like with the data, et cetera, of that. And then has higher security and has like a magnetic opening. So there's a lot more security for people to get in there. And then the city doesn't need to pay for that. So this was their idea. I heard they're pitching it to investors. Some of the investors were quite impressed by that. I think, you know, it's, it's very much overdue. And then you can promote, you know, new local business in there. And if, if the city council would suggest, hey, we have these problems, let's reach out to the startup community. You know, we're going to open this up to everybody. Here's all of our problems. Hello startups, come and solve this and we will promote this and, and state this. And then we've got your back when you're talking to VCs and we'll be saying to your VC, hello VCs, we need these problems solved here. These startups here have the best solutions for that. Can you, some of you guys please fund this? Maybe, maybe the city will match a little bit of funds into this or that in some respect. And everybody would absolutely love that. They would really get behind you if, if you're going to open up, you know, the, the problems of the city into the startup community, the innovators, et cetera, that can, really great at solving problems with technology. And everybody in California absolutely loves that. It'd be great to see some of these, you know, leaders in these positions in government office, do that and focus on the small business development, which so many, they don't really do. You know, they're focusing on, on these much bigger corporate, you know, fests instead of, you know, where it matters the most.
It is crazy. I think you've been looking in my playbook because that's actually one of my proposals is to arm the citizenry, you know what I mean? We want to make sure that the public has an opportunity to strike back against crime just as much as our law enforcers, you know? So I want to make sure that our neighborhood watch organizations have the resources that they need to follow through on those patrols when police officers aren't in the neighborhood. You know, expanding our citizens police academy, you know, taking some of these disadvantaged youth and people that want to maybe go into law enforcement, but maybe have a criminal history themselves to turn a new leaf, you know, and get involved in the community and actually provide that protection themselves. So not to mention, no better to know who's actually behind these break-ins and, you know, these petty crimes than the people themselves in those neighborhoods. So if they're getting the word on the streets, so to speak, from inside sources, then they're able to take action. And hopefully again, in, in cooperation with police officers, be able to bring those type of crimes down to a minimum, if not make them non-existent at all. But it's a matter of taking action. I think also, you know, poverty plays a role into it and people are desperate. These are desperate times and people do. and people are desperate. These are desperate times and people do desperate things. So
People, people are hurting. The, the real inflation is like sixteen, seventeen percent. They try to tell us it's like eight. And so, yeah, I mean, just go to the grocery store, you could see massive increases, the gas pump and so on and so on. So people are hurting and then of course, crime will rise during these uh economic depression times. Uh Nicholas, but I wanted to, I wanted to ask you something because I know that you campaigned with the conserv- the, the conservatives, these different uh conservative groups, and they didn't like your stance on Black Lives Matter, right? Because they're totally against Black Lives Matter and you were saying Black Lives Matter back when you're running for governor. So what's your position on Black Lives Matter now? And do you want to explain that for our hardcore, right-wing conservative audience who's totally against Black Lives Matter? You want to under- uh explain the nuance of your position or just tell us your position on Black Lives Matter?
Absolutely. Well, I've always been an advocate of uh police reform. You know, I myself am a police abuse survivor, so I see the need for it. Um and uh a- again, support the call from the community that demands that. I mean, they are paying for a city service and they uh should receive that. They should be receiving the best uh, the best services available, whether it's police services or fire services or uh uh again governmental services. Um so when it comes to uh the black community, again, saying, hey, when it comes to abuse by police officers, we would like more accountability, then I uh again, wholeheartedly support that. Uh any community for that matter. I live in Florida at the time and
That's what I never got Nicholas, is it's like who, nobody's pro-police brutality, right? I mean, who could be, but I think
Even or not, uh uh when you make this argument to people and you, you know, uh, I guess e- explain the distinction, they still are confused. They, they see what Black Lives Matter does uh or as far as the, you know, uh provocateurs that are going out there and destroying property or whatever the case may be. Because overall, if you've ever participated in any of their rallies or protests or whatever the case may be, their majority peaceful. Uh same thing with the reopen protest that I've been to. Same thing with the, the second amendment protest that I've been to, you know? Uh all of them, the majority of them has been, have been peaceful. And the media has a job, you know? They're going to report on those incidents that people fear, you know, because they're a fear network, they're a propaganda network. So the more that they can feed into people's um hunger uh for destruction and chaos and you know, to run somewhere and hide, then um that's what they're going to gravitate towards. So when you have minor incidents happen in these marches and rallies, that's what they pay attention to. But uh when it comes to the organization of Black Lives Matter, I've always, always have been outspoken against them, against them. Because I knew that um any organization that's taking a certain amount of money, especially from people such as George Soros and taking, you know, dollar amounts to the tune of thirty million dollars. That's, that was their seed money to start as a startup back in twenty sixteen. When I was initially looking into uh joining them, the organization part of it, excuse me, and that's when I learned about the inner workings of it, that that money was not trickling down to the local level. So just that itself, um again, um raised a red flag to me. And I'd, I've done my best as a black man, that again, has had these experiences with police officers to say, hey, this organization, they're off path. They're, you know, they, they're perpetrators and they're, if anything, they're using that call to action and exploiting it for their own personal gain. And now here we have proof of that, you know, with organization uh leadership actually doing exactly that with the tens of millions of dollars they've gotten in support.
No, no, what, what, what do you think? If, if you, if you go on to win and uh from what I'm he- I'm hearing so far, i- i- I, I'm already hoping that you do. It's uh, it's like some good, some good things uh that you're intending on doing and that, that sounds fantastic. I, I think, you know, personally, in, in, in my opinion, you would then probably have some responsibility as a, as a public officer working in the government to probably take some action or a- at least really uh significantly look into what you can do about what I see as the uh campaign finance violations and fraud, widespread fraud that were committed against, you know, all of these black people that were directed to the Black Lives Matter website to donate, et cetera. And that, all of that money was funneled, diverted uh to the Act Blue, right, uh Demonocrat Party uh candidates, et cetera, what white liberal candidates, white liberal candidates, you know, uh a lot of them from significantly racist backgrounds. It was just absolutely atrocious to see this. Uh and, and I know if it was the, if the, it was the other party doing that, if it's the Republican Party, people probably be in jail already for, for doing that. I, I can't even believe that this has been allowed to go on as long as it has. And, and you know, campaign, this campaign finance violations, as, as far as I know, unless I'm incorrect. Uh but if I am correct, somebody needs to do something about that. And anybody in, in any government office can, you know, initiate proceedings, legal proceedings against that. Um i- i- and should be ordering that, uh in my opinion, what, where are you on that issue?
Well, I would
We're frauded, they're misled and that, that's misleading advertising. I mean, there's a whole basket of statutes that they violated there. And somebody needs to do something about it. Nobody's doing anything about it and that, that's wrong.
Right. Well, I would stand with the people of Fresno that have been harmed by their fraud. Um you know, if they wanted to again, speak out and um join me in um taking legal action against them, um then I would push it forward as far as I could to make sure that they got compensated for any of their losses. But um I think it's a matter of again, of uh pressure being put on um our federal government, you know, which I could also help do, you know? I could use soapbox in my position to make sure that they are being held accountable uh for their, you know, crimes, because it is definitely a crime. And the people of Fresno and everywhere in California or uh nationally have been scammed by these people that have taken their money and have chosen to use it for their own personal interests opposed to putting them to use uh that they were uh initially given under the context of. So um maybe even leaning on the governor to do something since this is an organization that was based out of Cal- uh that is based out of California um and has several of its leaders living in California. So um
Right.
The governor definitely needs to do his job also. But my focus is going to be making sure that the people of Fresno are taken care of and protected. Whatever I can do here locally, I definitely will.
Yeah, it seems, you know, if, if, if we were to assert to people and say, hey, you know, contribute to Alpha Omega Energy and our, our clean energy technology startup, and then we took all of the money, you know, that money was instantly diverted on the, on the website to, to, you know, uh us or friends, friends of ours making Domino's Pizza franchises. I mean, they put us in jail. They put us in jail tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, they did the same thing with Enron, you know, they uh threw Bernie Madoff in jail. Uh but it, it's a matter of the law enforcement doing their job as well. I, I guess is, we can help with the investigation as far as moving it along because it can only move as quickly as they're able to collect evidence and I guess provide the, the proof needed to make arrests.
Right. But if, if the city council is calling out for it, saying, hey, look, you know, we want to, we want people to come forward. Everybody that gave money to this organization under, you know, this situation, this guise. If you, you know, that, that, you know, looks like it's a, and the city council can take this up with uh their legal counsel that the city council has access to, to say, you know, what statutes does this break? What laws did this actually break, et cetera? And, and ask them, right, the city council could even order them. And when they find out that they did break, you know, X number of statutes, whatever that is, obviously there is some breaches there of some kind at the ver- at the very least, uh they could, they could ask a lawyer to call in to uh a class action for the entire uh county and then, you know, uh encourage them to, you know, open this, this class action up nationwide. They could do it from Fresno, from Fresno County. And also, you know, uh ask and, and request, you know, after advice from, from the, the legal counsel, ask the law enforcement there in Fresno uh county to take uh legal action a- against us and defend the citizens of, of Fresno County. And, you know, and, and you could put some serious pressure on them and, and the media is going to ex- uh talk about this, et cetera. And the people are all going to get behind it. Uh and, and that could, that could turn the entire thing nationwide uh to bring justice for these people. So um
Yeah, if we file a lawsuit against them on behalf of the city of Fresno and the people of Fresno, um then maybe that will be that uh Domino's gets everything going. So we'll see what we can do. I- it's a matter of first, getting elected and um, you know, putting uh all of the priorities out there on the table to what matters most to the people of Fresno. So
I mean, it's such, it's such a crime to see them say, hey, Black Lives Matter, Black Lives Matter. We're going to steal this slogan, we're going to steal this cause, et cetera. Give your money in here to this cause. And then they just divert it to something else and these people that e- everybody thought they're giving to this group, they didn't get anything.
Absolutely.
That, that is just a- absolutely outrageous. I can't even believe that they
Oh, but uh, oh, but you first have city officials that are scamming taxpayers right here, you know? So if we can't, if we can't get down to the bottom of who those people are first, how can we then go after, you know, a national organization? So that's what I'm saying about cleaning up house, you know, if we want to drain the swamp truly, then we
Yeah, it's got to be done locally.
Absolutely.
It's got to be done locally. And the, and the lawyers involved in that, they, they will be more than happy to do a class action, extend itself to class action, you know?
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure.
So, so that's all that you would need to do. And you know, once one law enforcement agency took action on something like that, of course, the other ones, they have to, they have to do it. So that's all that you need to do is focus on local. Uh but think of, think about the whole country and, and all of these people that were, I mean, it's just another fraud. And they're just t- taking advantage of these people again, which is, is so disgusting to see that, that they, that they've done that.
Yeah, we need, we need to clean up uh locally here first for sure. Uh so Nicholas, I'm sure you notice in Fresno and California, there's homeless everywhere, right? We have a major homeless problem, major drug problem. And I saw that you posted, this is one of the solutions. You want to tell us about this as one of your solutions for homelessness?
Yes, 3D printed homes. I've been promoting the idea since I first ran for office in twenty thirteen, uh twenty fourteen. The idea, the concept was fairly new uh about 3D printing. But um I, I could foresee the possibilities. And when it comes to addressing um homelessness and affordable housing even, 3D printed technology to me just uh stands out as being one of the best affordable ways that we could do exactly that.
Cause what are they doing now? They're like commandeering hotels or they did uh
Yeah.
Hotels.
Yeah, and then, and spending tens of thousands of dollars to renovate, you know, dilapidated properties, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars to provide uh containment homes for those in need. So that's actually been proven now. I, I made that claim a long time ago that, you know, a hundred thousand dollars was being spent on these containment homes that had no bathroom, had no um, no water, no running water, no running uh plumbing at all, no heating. Uh it was basically just a, you know, a, a four walls. So um yeah, my idea is to take those four walls, make it something such as this, which is a spherical house that was built in under twenty-four hours in Japan. Um the technology right now is being used here in America, in California particularly, in Rancho Mirage. The company is building 3D printed homes for residential communities. So if we actually used it to address homelessness, we could do so in a more economical manner as well as um clear up some of the uh, the trash out of our landfills since this used recyclable materials, you know? Um and they're sustainable. So uh they have their own water and power. So it's the one and done type of situation and some of these models cost less than ten thousand dollars. So my idea is to bring one of those manufacturing facilities to Fresno. Uh if we had one here, then we could easily um spit out these homes, you know, uh fairly quickly and uh cheaply, you know, it would provide jobs for the people of Fresno. It could also provide a, a matter of uh economic boost to the city of Fresno since we could again, also sell some of these homes as affordable homes to people that, you know, want to buy a house and don't want to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars or millions of dollars doing so. They can just buy one of these and buy the land and put it on the land and they're portable. They can take it wherever they want, you know? So um what I would like
They can be exported all across the country and all across the world as well. It could, it could be a potential export opportunity as well for the city.
Right, exactly.
Fantastic.
Yeah. So um what I want to do is actually have communities where, you know, um it, it, it's like a public community where we have public bathrooms and um kitchen facilities, et cetera. Uh but we have these yurt homes to house our uh people that are living on the streets. So if we were to provide that and, and there's even other models where it's a one-bedroom, one-bathroom. Some of them are multifamily um homes that can be built to provide housing for the families that are living on the streets. There's, you know, women with small children living on the streets and then out of their cars even or in those hotels that you were talking about. And we definitely want to make sure they, they have a roof over their heads. We have military veterans, we have um, you know, disadvantaged youth that have been
Nicholas, I don't think people truly understand how bad it is here in California. You have to see it with your own eyes.
Yeah.
Truly understand, because we have the worst of any place in the United States, the homeless problem. And it's so, I mean, you, these people are living in makeshift uh cardboard boxes, tents, uh tarps. And it's just, it's, it's like lower than third world living conditions. It's horrible. This should never happen in America, never happen in California. And it's our political leadership that has created the environment through their failure that has allowed this crisis to happen and it needs to end. And this is a great solution to this homeless
Absolutely, absolutely fantastic solution. And, and the money, the money is going to be there, the VC money is going to be there. Uh the finance is going to be there for something like this if it's done through the city, like a joint city initiative, partnering with startups, local startups and business people. And then of course, a venture cap- you know, venture capitalists want, want to do this, impact, impact funds, et cetera. They're, they're definitely going, going to want to support something like this.
Home Depot sponsored this, you know, uh again, wouldn't cost taxpayers a dime. And now we have this home uh manufacturing plant here in our city. Um it's, it's
Yeah, I think it has to be done. It absolutely has to be done. Um you know, it would be, it'd be total incompetence not to do it. So, so I'm really happy to see you uh supporting something like this also.
Thank you.
That's the lea- that's the leadership that, that all government officials need to be taking is uh, you know, moving into this, these new technologies, supplying them into the, into the marketplace uh in their cities, growing the economy with these kind of opportunities. Uh so I, I'm happy to see you doing that. As a, somebody, somebody who's uh big on technology and, and making technology.
Well, we, we gotta utilize the technology there, especially if it's um, it's presenting itself as a solution to these problems, you know? That's my, my um idea is that the reason why government exists the way that it does and is, it's so bloated is because they drag out the problems, you know? The more that they do that, the more taxpayer money that they get to collect and the more they get to campaign on saying that they're going to solve that problem the next time around. And then nothing happens, you know? So
Nicholas, tell, tell us about this post that you put up a couple of days ago. What's going on here for a city of Fresno given five million dollars for Clean California Grant Program? What's going on with that? That is a lot of money. I think you said, uh, that's a boatload of money. That is a boatload of money.
Five billion dollars to the left, five billion dollars to the right. They're just throwing millions and Gavin Newsom, I guess this is one of his favorite cities because he keeps dumping cash into the city, but it's not being But it's not being spent. You know, the the money was supposed to be used on building um, what is it sidewalks? And uh, just improving our infrastructure, uh, improving the roads, of course, that hasn't been done. Um. What is it? Miguel Arias wants to tout about what they're doing around the Belmont Corridor. But what about everybody, everywhere else in the tower district? What about Chinatown being completely underdeveloped? What about the uh, southwest area uh, side of town where I live? That uh, is still being, it it's still underdeveloped. So that money isn't being used wisely. And it's a matter of mismanagement, of course, and there's tons of projects that are shelved. And it's like, the reason why they're sitting there, these great ideas that are being um, overlooked. Uh, you know, not being taken into consideration is because of the funding. Here's the money, you know, take, take the project, take the money, put them together, make it happen, you know? It's not like that they don't know what to do with the money, you know? There's, there's tons of projects again and that have already been developed that are waiting to move forward. Um, so yeah, I I plan on making sure that I fast track those already, you know, existing projects. Uh, after review, of course, we want to make sure that we're not wasting it uh, on another government boondoggle. But if it's worth the cost and we have the cash to get the job done, then let's just do it already. Um, so yeah, we gotta make sure that. Um, the speed bump installation is also done. That's another demand by the people of community. Because of the drag racing that happens in residential areas, it's causing a safety concern, especially when there's small children in those neighborhoods, you know? My uh, my wife and my son, we all go jogging around the neighborhoods and, you know, and speaking to my neighbors. They don't want a family such as ours to get hit by a car and then have to deal with another tragedy here, you know? Um, so we want to.
There's a, there's another tech solution for startups to, to do if if there's not enough, you know, cameras in these different areas, whatnot. Uh, you know, in, in, if they, if they want to go one more step, in addition to uh, you know, speed bumps, et cetera, they could have cameras in different places, you know, funded by the startup. And the uh, the city, you know, pay something. They don't have to pay all of the infrastructure because the startup and investment capital could pay for that. But there's an income stream there uh, from the city and the city could ask also, uh, you know, the insurance industry to get involved with some kind of incentives or some, you know, uh, as well to. Uh, be, uh, because of course, it's going to, anytime you're going to, uh, you know, reduce vandalism or reduce any of these issues and reduce insurance claims. Then you have a profit center there as well, which can, so you create this uh, opportunity there for, for. Uh, these people that want to get into law enforcement, like you're talking about it, there's another, another uh, meeting there that can, that can be done. So. Yeah, there's certainly no, no shortage of things to be built. Uh, but they, we, we need these proactive people like yourself that want to get this moving a little bit faster. Uh, you know, it's already, it's twenty twenty-two and we don't have the flying cars yet, right? Like what promised to us back in nineteen eighty-five, right? So get it moving a little bit faster, get some technology funded.
But the problem is, the problem is here, we have a great ideas, we have the money, but we have these corrupt politicians. Now you see Arius, Esparza, Maxwell and Soria, they're the woke, far-left uh, quote progressives, they're like communists. There's corrupt gangsters is what they are at the end of the day, that push people around, use uh, all their woke political correctness to uh. To bully people and get nothing done except for their own personal advantages. We gotta get rid of all four of them. Because they're doing nothing but enriching themselves at the cost of the whole county here now, the city and the county at this point. All five hundred thousand plus residents are suffering due to the corruption of very few.
Yes, absolutely. Thanks for that.
How about, how about having open, you know, open finance uh, for the people? It should all be open. That doesn't really make any sense to, to me. One of the things that we did with our startup, we put every single receipt on it, onto the Google Drive, everything that we spent, every, you know, down to the last dollar. Uh, I don't understand, you know, and it's not that difficult even for a startup to do when you don't have big money for accountants and, and these kind of things. I, how, how is it even possible that, that the finances of the taxpayer, this is our money? How is it even possible that this is not completely open from the beginning, open accounting? And then the entire community, community can get inside of there and look at different things, suggest different, you know, cost-cutting opportunities. It could come for that business. It's gotta be opened up, man. So, so I, I, I'm, I'm cheering for you. I hope you can get in there and make that happen for the people and make laws that they can, they can't shut it down after that. Um.
Exactly. Well, my technology solution for this post here that he has up about the audit is to um, and. First, we want to audit those officials. We want to, we want to make sure that that's done. We want to make sure our public uh, finances uh, have, have not been misappropriated and mismanaged. And the best way to do that is with a public, independent audit uh, that's happening in real time. Where we actually see where the money is going, what's been accounted for so far, et cetera, et cetera. But um, the technological solution I have moving forward is to make all of those transactions public record on the blockchain. Why don't we have a, a website? We can just, you know, uh, you know, go to, like you just said, and look up all the finances. And I, I, one of my favorite websites is transparentcalifornia.com. Um, I use it all the time just to kind of see where our money has been going. But it's a website that relies on public officials providing them with accounting data. And when they refuse to give them that, you know, that information, even though it's uh, under the Freedom of Information Act. Uh, you know, it delays them from posting it for the public to see. So a lot of the time, it's maybe a year or a few years, there we go. Uh, you know, um, after, after the fact, uh, but. We still are able to see where that information is. And hey, what if we had a company like Transparent California? Gave them all of the uh, actual records, you know, that they needed. And now the public can go to Transparent California and see all of that up-to-date, real-time information.
Yes, yeah, it's gotta be, it's gotta be done. And all of these um, you know, public officials, et cetera, there should be. You know, at least some kind of board or scrutiny, um, you know, for that also, like, you know.
No oversight committees at all. We need that.
Trump had to divest from absolutely everything. They put him through the rigmarole, et cetera, et cetera, for all of this. And, you know, generally, I, generally, I support that. You know, I, I don't think you should have to divest, anybody should have to divest from things. Just put, put somebody to watch everything, like, of course, all of the records need to be made public for, for any of these positions. I mean, you're in government, you're, you're there to serve the people, not to serve yourself in your own interest to enrich yourself and make, you know, endless money and use this as a machine, you know, to enrich yourself. And but clearly, that's what many people are doing. There was just another New York official, a Democrat that was arrested for bribery. It was all over the news yesterday. And it's just happening endlessly.
Lieutenant Governor of New York, yeah, was arrested for corruption. That was kind of a big deal.
Yeah, you were talking about Miguel Arias and this Brown Act violations or at least speculation of uh, thereof. And he's still under investigation for those violations, by the way. So who knows what could happen in the near future once, um, you know? Uh, those investigations are concluded. But yeah, it, it, you shouldn't have to divest. You know, you're, you're a public official and yeah, now you're in the public sector, but when you were in the private sector and you did business, that's still yours. Now, while you're in the public sector, you should not be involved in any influential business deals that's going to benefit. You know, your private investments. Now, as long as those deals are being done and it's being done publicly. You know, then it's fine. I, I own Tesla stock, you know, and hey, I'm open to talking to Elon Musk about uh, developing a Hyperloop. Here in Fresno or taking over the high-speed rail and, you know, uh, giving it up and running and.
He might, he might be, he might be an interested investor in that housing project. You know, he, he lives in a boxable house, right? So he really likes these low-cost.
Yes.
You know.
He even said, hey, I'll give money to anybody that has an answer to homelessness. So we step up and say, hey, if we have an answer to get the five thousand, nearly five thousand people in Fresno off of the streets and into homes. Maybe he'll invest into it and we'll take the money.
I'd be, I'd be surprised if you would. I'd be surprised if you wouldn't.
Didn't anyone, uh, didn't you want to turn Twitter headquarters in San Francisco into a homeless shelter?
Yeah, he said that. Probably would be a very cushy one too, you know? But um, that's, that's what we need, you know, more innovation, more um, people coming to the table with different ideas as to how we can. Solve these issues and, and especially homelessness. I mean, uh, we got more than enough to take care of everybody, tenfold. You know, and if the money's being wasted, then it, it definitely could be better well-spent. That's exactly what I'll be doing. Um, I don't want to prevent the public from getting involved. Also, we have a city ordinance that uh, Miguel Arias just authored, co-authored. With another city official to prevent the public from being able to go into a homeless encampment, you know, during a cleanup. Um, a lot of advocates go there to provide information to those people that are being displaced or to offer assistance, et cetera. Um, but now, if you were to do so, whether you're doing so as an individual or part of a church. Or uh, are a member of the press, you could be fined two hundred and fifty dollars or even be charged a misdemeanor. So it's just ridiculous.
Yeah, that, that's crazy. What kind of services are there right now to, you know, like a human resources service or whatnot? Do people going into these different places, collecting their information and getting, getting those people so that they can get alerts and an app, their phone, whatever? Some human resources company or contractor for the city that is actively working to get those people work and opportunities, et cetera. What, what is there right now for that?
Well, there are existing services, but they're just like every other government service, you know? They're uh, long drawn out, they're, you know, incompetent. If anything, they're dysfunctional completely and it makes it even more frustrating for those people that are in need of the resources to actually receive them. You know, there's qualifying factors and um, simply being someone that's living on the street that's destitute and don't have a way to. Provide an income for themselves isn't good enough. Then they have waiting periods, you know, to where uh, people may have to wait months. Sometimes even a year or so before they even get approved to receive those benefits. So it's just awful again that we have government providing these solutions, but yet also getting in the way from them actually being. You know, uh, provided to those in, in need of them.
And there, there you go with private market solutions again, you know, or the government could, could bring, bring them in and say, hey, you know, again, you know, startups. Please, you know, make some services. It was, we got these issues with them being approved. We have all this red tape, all these rules and regulations, everything we need to follow. But the private market doesn't have any of that. You guys can make a, you know, an app or a program or a platform or whatever that chases after these people with all these different jobs, does all the matchmaking, everything else. And gives you what you need, sets up things for you. Um, there might be something like that right away. I absolutely, Sam, can you show this uh, picture? I absolutely, I cannot leave this meeting without asking you about this.
Okay, real quick, because uh, Nicholas has to go, but uh, let's, let's wrap it up right now and uh, one give us his campaign pitch on the way out.
Here, here's one that's world-changing with radical impact for absolutely everybody. And there's this issue of, uh, there's been over five thousand and well over five thousand eight hundred. Uh, technological patents, et cetera, uh, under government secrecy orders that have, that have been stifled. The mainstream media has reported on this uh, many times in the past. It's not some fake internet conspiracy theory or something like that. It's very real. And there's over four thousand energy technologies that have been seized uh, in the past and those are held to this day. That all of the governments are screaming about climate change. There's a massive energy crisis all over the world, right? You got this degrading California power grids, PG&E almost went bankrupt again. You have these wildfires being started from that. And, and right, and, and then you have this Biden shutting down a Keystone Pipeline or just endless energy crisis. And I've never seen a single politician ever in any office, even advocating for even one of these technologies to be released. Can I please pin you down and get a commitment from you that you will ask, you know, for these to be released or at least some kind of review and be the first guy? In American government, you know, history that I've ever heard of, that actually starts to advocate to start to release some of this and allow more of these kind of, you know. Uh, incredible technologies to come into the market. I, I made four thousand six hundred plus technologies so far. I don't believe that they're ever gonna allow real breakthrough energy in America. So I'm not in America building it in there because I think they'll stop it, just like they stopped all of these.
Right.
So can, can, can we get some commitment from, from you to, to call if you're in office? For, for this to be reviewed and do it publicly. So, so other people are going to start considering this as well in today's environment.
Absolutely. Uh, I don't think there should be any type of classification of information by the government. And if it's not a matter of national security, you know, and it has to be something that is deemed an immediate threat. You know, um, that should be concealed for whatever reason, um, then so be it. But uh, preventing innovation and ideas from being shared with other people is something that I, I believe is just some, it's unnecessary. And uh, it's um, a bit despicable, you know, because you can tell that there's some malicious intent there to stop growth. Of our society, you know, on, whether it's to benefit a small group of people, you know, that have a monopoly or whatever it is. But uh, yeah, i- if we really wanted to see our flying cars, you know, or uh, there not being. People living on the streets or not being any kids uh, or families that are hungry. Then we have all sorts of ways that we can, again, um, make sure that we are providing solutions. Um, permanent solutions to make sure that we don't have to worry about them again. So I actually am um. Am promoting with my goal, New Deal, uh, which I was doing during my gubernatorial campaign to make, to make Fresno. Um, a renewable energy hub. So if we can have, if we can transition to a renewable uh, energies here in Fresno. And kind of lead the way on uh, making sure that we're having an impact on uh, or lessening our impact on the environment. And that'll be the way to, the way we could do so. Fuel-free backup solutions for our energy, for our water, definitely is essential. You know, we want to make sure that, that we're not experiencing blackouts. There was a child here that died recently. Because we had a blackout here in Fresno and they weren't able to make a phone call for emergency services. So uh, we want to make sure that we have power and with threats of war and other stuff, you know, we want to make sure that it's reliable. Uh, water, uh, food, all of those things. I, I actually am um, wanting to create an inventor's hub. You know, like in um, I believe Singapore and Barcelona, you know, where we can have community centers where. People with the biggest and brightest ideas come together. We come up with ideas to provide to government officials to deal with whatever the case may be. Um, but it'll also be open source. So there isn't any issue of, you know, patents and trademarks or whatever the case may be. We came up with a way to solve the issue as a community. We're going to deal with it as a community. Um, so I think more platforms such as that being created will actually invite. Uh, free thinkers to actually want to share their ideas and hey, if you want to profit from it, then we definitely need to make the patenting process uh, a lot easier. You know, I, I think it's awful that we don't have a card that runs. I think it's awful that we don't have a car that runs on water or hemp oil, like Ford proposed, you know? But it's suppressed by some oil industry, you know? So this, it's, it's the crony capitalism that has really killed growth and innovation. I, I'm, I'm not a crony capitalist. I don't, I'm not going to be in the, in the pocket of any lobbyists, any corporation, any, anybody like that, any union. They're not backing my campaign now. And I'm pretty sure that once I get elected and actually start to put my policy proposals into action, they won't be backing me in the future either.
They're not going to back you, no. Okay, there you go, Nicholas. We appreciate your time. What's the best way for people to get ahold of you? What, what website is this to donate to you? Is this it right here?
Yes, it is. That's the best outlet for information. If you want to connect with me on social media, it's there, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, all on my CrowdPac. That's crowdpac.com/c/go-wild-fresno. So check out the website. My CrowdPac is basically like a GoFundMe for political candidates. So please consider making a small contribution. Every little bit helps. Like I said, I'm right now just trying to buy a few more signs and do some Facebook ads and all of that stuff. So it doesn't take much. So please consider making a contribution. And if you don't want to give me any money, then you can make an endorsement on crowdpac.com. Give me a thumbs up. Let the people out there know you support my campaign. And that's definitely going to help. Spread the word.
What's, when's the deadline again to vote? Or when is election day for the primary?
Starts May 9th because they'll be sending out those mail-in ballots, remember? So June 7th is the actual election day, the primary date. But those mail-in ballots will be sent out early May. So look out for that mail-in ballot when you get it. If you are in my district, please support my campaign by voting for me. If you are not, then you can help by spreading the word to other people to vote for my campaign. And that's it. I mean, Fresno is one of the fifth largest cities in, in California, one of the largest cities in the entire country. So it's a way for we, the people and the liberty-minded, you know, patriots across the country to make a stand right here, right now in Fresno. So join me, Go Wild with Wild Star for Fresno City Council.
Go wild. We got to get you in there, man. Get rid of this Arias, that's for sure, because this guy's just, every time you turn over a rock, some corrupt dealing this guy's doing, it's just ridiculous. So yes, vote for Nicholas Wildstar, Fresno City Council, District 3. Do your own research. Subscribe to this channel. Speak out and take action. Peace, love and liberty. Have a good night.